I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. Okay, call for regular meetings to order. And would you have a forum tonight? We've got 100 percent. Teresa's on the Zoom. Would you have a consent agenda, treasurer's report? Approval of the minutes of December 7th? Should be December 21st or something. December 21st. And approved payment of the bills. Do we have treasurer's report, please?
Yes, sir. January 11th treasurer's report. Payable checks in the amount of $126,703.42. There are only three major vendor checks that represent 81 percent of the payable checks, and that is an amount of $99,736.91. Payroll for January 7th, 2022, to include social security and Medicare taxes, Two monthly bond payments. Don't we normally have three?
No, one dropped off. We paid it off in the middle of the year. It's only two.
Two monthly bond payments in the amount of $46,519.58. Grand total payable checks, payroll, and bond payments,
Okay, with that, we get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Walter makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Approve it with the change of the date on the last.
Well, it's on the agenda.
Okay. Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, we have two agenda items, 3.1 and 3.2. We'd like to have Mr. Meadows come up and discuss those with you so you know exactly what those are. If you have any questions, you can ask direct to Jeff.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Jeff.
I believe in front of you, you all have a letter on city letterhead that I'll refer to. And it was, the letter is to the State Emergency Management Agency, discussing these two change orders. The first of which is change order number two, which is for the Phase One construction, the site development work, which is being completed by L. Keely Construction. That change order is in the amount of $94,918. And the second change order would be change order number one, for Phase Two final installation work being constructed by McClanahan Construction. And that one is in the amount of $271,353. So I'll talk about the Phase One change order first. Again, it's change order number two. And change order number one had no cost impact. It was just a contract time extension. So this is change order number two, and it has six items associated with it. Five of those are relatively minor in scope and cost. And so the majority of the cost is associated with one item. I'll just run through them real quick and give you just a brief explanation of each item. The first one is that we eliminated 127 millennial feet of chain link fence. We did that to make Phase Two construction easier because basically some of the fence that we had included in Phase One around the Influent Pump Station was going to be in the way of the Phase Two contractor. So we pulled it out of that contract and added it into the bid plans of Phase Two. Item number two is we widened the valve vault hatches. That was a result of the equipment that was selected for the wet well. The pumps that were the low bid and that we awarded to were slightly larger and required a larger hatch. So we had to modify that slightly. Item number three, the contractor would install electric conduit. This is the three-phase conduit that will provide electric service to the plant itself. So that's underground electric conduit that was installed or being installed with the water line that was already in the contract. So it made sense for the Phase One contractor to widen the trench while he was installing the water line and install this conduit. That work was slated also to be in the Phase Two contract. But again, logistically, it made way more sense to put it in with the Phase One. Item number four, during the Phase Two final design, we made some modifications to the site and actually were able to eliminate some of the retaining wall on the upper side of the site. So that was a deduct. Item number five, and this is the most significant of the six items, was the, is to install a concrete line channel on the upper side of the large retaining wall number three. So this is to collect all of the drainage off the site as it goes to the north. Before it gets to the largest retaining wall, it's intercepted by this concrete drainage channel. So this was also intended originally to be in the Phase Two work. But because of the, you know, logistically, it made more sense for the Phase One contractor to install it as he's installing the wall itself. And the final item, during the excavation of retaining wall number three, encountered some groundwater, just kept seeping out of the hill. So we put a French drain in to carry that water out to the ditch. Are there any questions on change order number two for L. Keely Construction?
So that's 3.1.
How does it impact the overall cost of the project?
Absolutely. That's a great question. Anita, was this total? Was this in the packet, this letter with the?
Yes, I gave him this. No, it didn't.
We also have a budget summary that was.
I don't have that part.
Okay, I can show it to you or basically, we're still carrying about a.
If you could show it. No, I don't have that.
This here?
No, I don't have.
He don't have his screen.
I don't have my screen. Yeah, could I see it?
You bet.
We're still carrying about 5 percent contingency. And so that total is that number that's blue. Even after both.
Okay, all right.
So that's about $1 million still in.
Still in contingents.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
You bet.
I answer my question.
Okay. Move on to the next one.
Okay. The next one is the change order number one for McClanahan Construction. And this work is associated, so as currently and in the original design and the current bid plans, we have one primary paved access road into the site. So as you recall, the site is elevated about 30 feet above Laramie Road, partly to get out of the floodplain, of course. That's a primary goal of the project. But also because of the slope of the site that we were developing, in order to be able to cut into the site, it needed to be, it was necessary to elevate it that much above Laramie Road and build retaining walls and so forth. So throughout the planning of the site, it was always a desire to have two accesses into the site. We were concerned about budget, so we bid it with only the single paved access. Once the bids came in, we revisited that idea and developed an alternative to build a new, a secondary access that would go to the west, or yeah, to the west, basically. So that serves multiple purposes. So in the event that the primary roadway is, for whatever reason, damaged during emergencies, blocked, whatever the case may be, we would have a secondary access to be able to get into the site from Laramie Road. Secondly, from an operations standpoint, the land application fields where the operators take the waste and land apply on the fields is to the west. So it would be a more convenient, efficient route for those sledge trucks to haul to the fields. And then really, one of the main reasons that it came up at this time is schedule, project schedule. The Phase One contractor is still completing the retaining walls and the last thing to complete would be, is the paved primary access road. So Phase Two contractor, even though we've awarded that contract, has not been able to access the site at this point to begin his work. This would, by building this secondary access road, it would allow him to move his construction forward and get started quicker. So now, another benefit that I haven't mentioned here is all of that, the Phase Two contractor intends to use off-road trucks when they excavate the structures on the site before they pour concrete, they intend to haul that material off using off-road trucks. And they could damage that brand-new concrete road that we're building as part of Phase One. So a number of reasons and benefits by building this secondary access. The total amount is $271,353. And we did an independent cost estimate based upon actual hard bids we've received and actually is a little bit lower than the estimate that we produced. So we're comfortable with the dollar amount. I'll also say that the letter that you have in front of you has been submitted to SEMA for FEMA approval. So I believe this is contingent, this, any action tonight is contingent upon funding approval.
We have included in the documents for your approval, it's a contingent agreement because of the change orders, but he has over $1 million in his contingency reserve. I don't believe, and Anita's been working on this real hard. And so we modified the letter to SEMA a couple of times requesting their approval. And it's contingent upon their approval. So, but we need everything they've got there.
Any questions, Jeff?
It's contingent on SEMA's approval.
Well, it's actually going to be FEMA.
He said SEMA.
SEMA is kind of a flow-through. They initially take it, they're our conduit to FEMA, but eventually it's going to be FEMA.
So even if we approve it tonight, it still has to be approved by FEMA or SEMA?
Well, it shouldn't be a problem because we're not asking for any more money. We're staying within the confines of the original amount of money approved.
They didn't think we'd have any trouble getting it approved since there was no money changing hands and we were just changing the scope of work.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
On Westwood Road you were talking about?
Yes, sir.
Is it paved road?
No, it will be an aggregate surface road. Yeah, so I may not have, the primary road is concrete paved, but this one would just be aggregate.
Where would it go out?
So it'll extend to the west and it would hit Laramie Road right around the entrance into the, is it the shooting range still? Yeah. Yeah. All right, thank you all.
Okay, 3.1, read the bill first.
Bill number 21-169, an ordinance approving change order one to contract with McClanahan Construction Company Incorporated for Phase Two final installation plans of the wastewater treatment facility relocation.
Motion on the first reading. John makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 21-169, an ordinance approving change order number one to contract with McClanahan Construction Company Incorporated for Phase Two final installation plans of the wastewater treatment facility relocation.
Get a motion on the first reading. Who was that? Teresa?
Yeah.
Okay, and Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Okay, read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3807, an ordinance approving change order number one to contract with McClanahan Construction Company Incorporated for Phase Two final installation plans of the wastewater treatment facility relocation.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Todd makes a motion, Linda second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Okay, 3.2, please.
Bill number 21-170, an ordinance approving change order number two to contract with L. Keely Construction Company for Phase Two final installation plans of the wastewater treatment facility relocation.
Get a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion. Reggie second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number 21-170, an ordinance approving change order number two to contract with L. Keely Construction Company for Phase Two final installation plans of the wastewater treatment facility relocation.
A motion on the second.
Motion.
Charles makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Read as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 3808, an ordinance approving change order number two to contract with L. Keely Construction Company for Phase Two final installation plans of the wastewater treatment facility relocation.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Todd makes a motion, Reggie second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa? Teresa?
Okay, 3.3 is the Manning Chart change adding a person to utility billing clerk. Edna, you want to say anything?
Um, I think we're reviewing this again. The committee approved it and recommendation is to add the utility billing clerk to the city's Manning Chart.
Okay, read this bill, please. 3.3.
Bill number 21-171, ordinance number 3809, an ordinance amending City of St. Roberts Manning Chart.
A motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 21-171, an ordinance amending City of St. Roberts Manning Chart.
A motion by, a motion by Todd? I think Teresa's seconded. Discussion, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3809, an ordinance amending City of St. Roberts Manning Chart.
A motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Second. Linda makes a motion, Reggie second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, 3.4 is an ordinance amending the Manning Chart for firefighter. Chief Shepherd, you want to make any statements?
Uh, no, I think we were.
Committee?
Yeah. We met the committee with Teresa and everybody.
Okay. There, read this bill, please.
Can I make a few comments, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so because we were making two changes to the Manning Chart, but we were doing them by two separate ordinances, I had to make the second one with some contingencies on it. So I am filling in in section four, I'm filling in ordinance number 3809, which was just enacted, and I am indicating, making a mark by showing that it was passed and enacted. And then in sections, oops, I'm sorry, there's a typo there, six and seven, it will, we will be voting on approving Exhibit B to this ordinance, which will show both the utility clerk and the firefighter. And so that's what you're voting on. Utility clerk has already been added by the prior ordinance, so we are now adding a firefighter to that Manning Chart that you just approved. So we are going to be voting on Exhibit B. Exhibit A is no longer in play because that only had the firefighter on it. Just want to make sure that everyone understands kind of the steps we had to take.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, read this bill.
Okay. Bill number 21-172, an ordinance amending City of St. Roberts Manning Chart.
A motion on the first.
Motion.
Pardon?
Motion.
Okay, Charles makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number 21-172, an ordinance amending City of St. Roberts Manning Chart.
A motion on the second reading. Reggie makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Uh, Karen, just have one question. Are you filling in everything else we're calling?
Yes, and I'm going to, I'm going to have a revised copy that I'll give to Edna.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, read as an ordinance.
Ordinance number 3810, an ordinance amending City of St. Roberts Manning Chart.
A motion on the reading of the ordinance. Todd makes a motion, Michael second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, next item up for is 3.5, an ordinance authorizing purchase of used dumpsters from Ziggan Mine. And we had the committee meeting just prior to this. I don't think anybody's got any questions. Anybody? Read it as a bill, please.
Mayor, you might want to, we're assuming commercial in a few months.
Yeah.
And we need the dumpsters.
I got a, I got a question for Tice.
Okay.
Tice, being that Rick is the son of the person that we're buying the property from, is it a compromise by law?
I'm not hearing you, I'm sorry.
Sir?
Being that Rick is the son of the person that we're buying the property from, is it a compromise of the law?
I, well, in this case, because of, no, it hasn't, the answer is absolutely not. He doesn't have anything to do with it, except for running the transfer station. Ziggan Mine basically had the residential under contract for us in many years. So the dumpsters that they have are consistent with our needs because we assumed the residential. Are two years over on the, we're reassume the commercial in May, I believe. We're going to need dumpsters because Ziggan Mine has a lot of that. But we have other commercial folks and we're going to phase in us to take everything over. Basically, Ziggan Mine, except for their outlined stuff, is going to have an access to dumpsters because we've exercised our statutory right. Mr. Ziggan Mine is an employee of the transfer station. That's his function. The purchase here is simply a need. It's a demand that we have that's innate and the cost to us is much less than any other way you're going to get them. So it's a win-win for us. Maybe it's a lose for Ziggan Mine, but it has nothing to do with that particular function at the transfer station. He runs the pickup. This is a purchase by you guys and your leaders. Has nothing to do with him, except they may consult him for, you know, whether it's whether they're good units or that kind of thing. I mean, I could see us asking him what size we need, those kinds of things. But the actual purchase is yours, the mayor's, and your city administration.
Okay, Mayor, he answered the question I asked.
Yeah, I need an Ivan in this.
Okay.
Okay, read it as a bill, please.
Bill number 21-173, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of used dumpsters from Ziggan Mine Sanitation.
A motion on the first reading. Todd makes a motion, Walter second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number 21-173, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of used dumpsters from Ziggan Mine Sanitation.
A motion on the second reading. John makes a motion.
Second.
Reggie second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa? Teresa?
Yes.
Read it as a, an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number three eight one one, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of used dumpsters from Ziggan Mine Sanitation.
A motion on the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Charles makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Teresa?
Yes.
Down to three point six, an ordinance up agreement for monthly payment of the time of the transfer station.
I could tell you off the line.
Vendor want to come in and dump? Trying to see who that is.
Somebody from Cuba.
D N L LLC.
Hey Ricky, is this a... This is the egg carton business?
Linda asked why, Linda asked why Cuba coming all the way down here to dump?
We get them all the time.
Really?
Yeah. Cuba has a waste thing, but we have a contractor, uh, one of the companies that they bring all the way down here. Okay, read it as a bill, please.
Bill number twenty-one dash one seven four, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account at the Saint Robert Transfer Station.
A motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, John seconds, clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd? Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number twenty-one dash one seven four, an ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account at the Saint Robert Transfer Station.
A motion on the first reading. Teresa makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
I'll get you on the next one.
Yes.
Okay, read it again.
Ordinance number three eight one two, ordinance authorizing agreement for monthly payment on account at the Saint Robert Transfer Station.
A motion on the first reading, Reggie makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call or roll.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, next committee meeting scheduled, which one is the appointment, says that?
Um, I don't know of a need for it unless you want to call for it.
Okay, Public Works, Steve, anything? Moving over to emergency service service. Okay, Park Committee, I think you...
They're meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
What date?
Two weeks.
Twenty-four January.
Two weeks, uh, what is, what was the...
Twenty-fifth.
At five o'clock on the twenty-fourth.
Oh, well, that's not two weeks.
Yes.
You count the days.
Okay, comments by all of them, and Teresa, we'll start with you.
Well, I heard pretty much of it, it's been in the old, it's over two ten minutes. I have no comments right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, John?
Have no comments, sir.
Okay, uh, Mike, what do you think? Walter?
No comments at this time.
Todd?
I'm good, so you did great to that cold snap unless Steve had something else, but, uh, that's due to... That's due to the, to the effort of, uh, Public Works and, you know, thank you for fire and police being out there for us, we appreciate it.
Reggie?
Nothing.
Linda?
I already got my question answered, nothing.
Charles?
Uh, two things, uh, they're having the MLK dinner on the fifteenth of, uh, this month. Uh, at the, uh, community center, it starts at five o'clock. Uh, tickets, tickets will be on sale right at the door, so we appreciate anybody that will support the MLK dinner. And, uh, the White Highway and Saint Robert intersection is supposed to be started, construction on the first of March. And I would recommend that, uh, Mr. Jeff Meadows, along with whoever he is that's constructing, uh, present a briefing to the council so that the city, city, uh, workers as well as the citizens know about the construction site and how it will impact the traffic. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, we have pre-construction meetings. Okay, comments by administration, city clerk, finance?
Um, on the city clerk side, the election, uh, candidates that, that signed up for election, I gave you a list of those, the candidates, uh, filing for the April fifth, twenty twenty-two election. Um, on the finance side, uh, the reported taxable sales in the city for January twenty twenty-two is twenty-three million, twenty-three million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, this is a, um, seventeen percent increase over what we received in twenty twenty-one.
Yay.
Which is a good sign, and these are actually the sales reported from November of twenty twenty-one, so...
So it's a good start.
I can't, I can't wait until December, sales come in, before sales come in. The monthly...
That's for the no, month of November.
Yeah.
That's correct, November sales. Um, used tax collection, um, that we received this month was thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-four cents. On the representation of three million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and two dollars of taxable online sales.
Wow.
For the month of November, basically. Uh, the balance in the operating account stands at two point one million.
Okay, any more sources, Jerry?
Um, nothing really, we're just working to fill our vacancies right now. Um, so if you know any C D O license holders, please send them my way if they are looking for a job. So, um, we're trying to fill our driver's positions as well as our new utility billing clerk position.
Yes.
Um, uh, our A accounts, accounts payable and collections clerk, we're also gonna need one of those. So Edna needs all your prayers this week and next.
Yeah, there's some interviews tomorrow, I know Fire Department's got three, and then you got one more morning or two.
Yeah, we've got one more, we've been pretty, um...
What time is that one tomorrow?
What year?
The, the driving one is ten.
Ten o'clock. Yeah, I don't know, you gotta be twenty-one, you got firefighter one or two? No? Okay.
How old are you then?
Eighteen.
Police chief, fire chief, Mike Shepherd.
Yeah, just want to give a little bit of a year review of twenty twenty-one. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We had, uh, I really gotta start carrying readers with me. Six hundred and forty...
Do you want me to hold it for you, Mike?
Yeah, can you just hold it out way out here, maybe by you, and I'll just read it now.
Here, here, Mike.
Yeah, so...
Are those readings?
I hope you can, I hope you can, I hope you can see, can you see?
Oh, it's much better. Thank you. So, six hundred and forty-three, uh, calls for service, uh, is what we had, uh, for last year. We actually conducted five thousand, five hundred and seventy-six hours of training, which definitely blows ISO requirement out of the water. Going down to events, we actually, uh, had a hundred and twenty hours of events that we worked last year on that aspect. And for the hydrants, four hundred and ninety-nine hydrants, uh, were flow tested, and we done four hundred and eighty inspections last year. So that includes your re-inspects and your initial, uh, annual inspections, because you have to go back sometimes for the violations. So, uh, the calls, uh, volume was probably up by about roughly, uh, twenty percent more. So, uh, busy, definitely busy, so had a, had a pretty good year of doing everything, so. And I think we're gonna continue on that path this year, and then, of course, next year, we're gonna get even busier, so. Any questions?
You have an inspector in your fire department?
We do not have an inspector on...
You don't have?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, no, we have the shifts that are doing it currently right now.
Okay.
Certified to be doing the inspections.
Yeah, yeah, we've got, we've got four that are certified, so...
Okay.
But we can, we got it streamlined down, uh, everybody can do inspections.
So if I had a question about an inspection, somebody would be able to answer it for me?
Yeah, yeah, we go off the two thousand and six I F C code book, is what we go off of, so if there's any questions, we can always look back in there as well.
Okay.
With that being said, yeah, uh, eventually, that'll be a need.
One, one question.
Yeah.
Uh, with the transition with Waynesville, uh, what does that look like from your perspective right now?
It's, just looking at it from what I've been looking at, and I'm gonna have some meetings down there, but, uh, we're gonna have about probably a hundred and seventeen more commercial businesses, and, uh, probably at least, and I don't want to speak out of turn on the hydrants, but I'd say just me shooting from the hip, knowing from years, uh, probably about another, another five hundred hydrants to flow down there, so it's gonna be busier. So, uh, which is why we're in the middle of also beefing up our staff more too, which is, which is gonna help.
Yeah, you have five hundred shifts.
Yeah, yeah.
I know you've already researched this, but with the new addition, are there any high points that you started to figure out there might be a secondary entry, just in case there are?
Oh, yeah.
You, you, you working on that point?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
It is already in order?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, there's some things we're gonna do this year, probably halfway in the year, that are, we're gonna have all of our guys go down and do, like we want to hit the high target points, like the high school, uh, the career center, the middle school, because we're gonna be having, taking all that in. It's probably also just roughly, I guess, estimate about over four hundred calls of service a year or two, it'll be, so. It's ballpark, but yeah, we've been looking at all the ins and outs, and we're gonna start having all the shifts and all the personnel get, get, uh... A lot of them are already familiar, including myself, but we're gonna get more familiar with, with everything down there. Yep. Any questions? All right, thank you. That is a lifesaver, thank you.
Uh, just a quick update here on some, uh, stuff. The, um, we're digging in some electric, underground electric in the, um, for some, uh, the subdivision down on Lomax, which is in the Ridge Creek subdivision, he's actually building, uh, out a few of those lots, so we had to put the electric in. We have hit solid rock, and so it's really slowed the digging down. Of course, uh, if you remember, last year, we lost both of our rock breakers, so we have one for the backhoe that we're using now. It's not quite, it's doing the job, but it would be faster if we had one for the excavator, so hopefully this, this year will be the one for the excavator. And it would have sped things up, we're in the third week now, so we've probably got another week to go on digging that. Working on the electric over here by the, the subway site, um, that is pretty much ready to go. I don't think they have switched it over yet to the underground. I think they was looking for a, a warmer night to do that, so when they bring it, put the power off, bring it back up, they don't have such a demand on, on the grid whenever they do that. Uh, the street department, um, did get a few of the, uh, patching, uh, in before the weather turned cold, so we had about everything patched, and then we've had to dig up a few spots, so, so we're starting all over again. Landmark Lane, the well out there, uh, that was in Ridge Creek, it actually had a, a pipe come apart inside of the, not in the pit, but in the well itself, that comes from the pressure tanks. Um, it's kind of, the pipe is, I don't know what they've used, i- it is a Schedule forty, but it, it's like a thinner walled Schedule forty, it's like a cheaper version of a Schedule forty pipe, so we actually had to cut everything out of that and repipe the whole thing to get, get it to stay together. Uh, that, those folks was down basically overnight, we had it back up and going the next morning. Um, we've had some damage to the, our, one of the city wells, well number two, out past, um, on, off of Z Highway. Had some vandals go out there, um, they have throwed rocks and broke out all the security lighting on it, so I've gotta put some new lighting on there, they, uh, tampered with electric meter, messed it up, pulled some ground wire off the, the pole out there, which if they would've got a little bit more, they would've hit the seventy-two hundred volt, and we would've probably found out who it was. And, uh, so they was very close to, to killing theirsself there.
Oh.
And, uh...
And where was that exactly, Steve, because we're on camera right now, so that...
Phoenix extension.
Yeah, it's, um, I guess if Phoenix went all the way through, it would be down there. It's just, if you go past Vicki Lynn Lane, there's a little gravel service road to the right, and we're right down in there. Uh, they had, um, it is actually offline right now, because they, they come back a third time and, uh, pulled the SCADA antenna loose from the wellhouse and jerked the, the coax into, so we're waiting on the guy to come do the repairs on that.
That's close to, we may, we may, uh, you know, in the future, think about cameras or something like that, just...
It's probably no internet service there, so I do have a camera up now.
Recorded, I mean, we may not have to have internet service, maybe something we have to go get later, but...
Yeah.
Can't you, can't you use like a trail cam?
That's, I have something up now, so I'm kinda watching it.
Yeah, Waynesville, Waynesville has the same problem in the park. Uh, people coming in vandalizing the, uh, latrines, the bathrooms down there in the park, and they just turn it up. So they, they locking it up at eleven o'clock at night.
They've done quite a bit of, uh, expensive damage down there. And, um, you know, it, now, after nine eleven, it is a federal offense, so if they catch them, they can be charged with a federal offense.
That's good.
It's not state or local, it is actually...
Did you get that, Darrell?
He probably will have a pair of...
And, um, so we are gonna add some barbed wire to the top of the fencing, hopefully in the next month, the fence guy will be here to, uh, do that, he's actually gotta extend the pipes up to do that. Um, we're gonna move the SCADA antenna, um, inside the, to a more secure location, and hopefully secure it to the building a little bit better. I am gonna change the, the lighting, I do have new lights, and, uh, we did build some cages, rock cages for them, so hopefully they won't get these broke out.
And I'm wondering if we can go up there, I'll, I'll talk to them.
So, and then, um, we're leasing our two backhoes. We had one of them go down, uh, due to a DEF pump inside the, you know, it's, it's all the DEF fluid stuff. The, the parts are pretty much unavailable now, so what, uh, CAT has done is they went to their new fleet, I can't remember where he said, it's another state way up north, and they actually are cannibalizing one of their new, uh, backhoes to rob parts off of it, and so we should have this one back up and going, hopefully in next week or two. Our, um, our dozer, the steering control module has went out on it, and is electrical. It created a short in the wiring harness and run the short back to the steering control module, so that dozer is pretty much down. We did get it up and running today, it took him about forty-five minutes just to get it to where he could steer it. It's getting worse, so took him about forty tries to get it started and stop to, to actually kick in and, and go. So they're looking at twenty twenty-three before we get that part. So we're gonna be down that dozer.
Didn't we, did we just get a dozer not long ago?
Let's go on.
Yeah.
That's the one that's down?
And it's down already?
Well, it's two years old.
Yeah, couple of years old. We've run, run it a lot, we've pushed a lot of dirt, we've added a lot of hours to it, so things don't last forever, unfortunately.
Basically...
They should at that price.
That price is cheap, wait till you hear the price of a new one. You're talking about a half a million dollar machine.
We're gonna have to go into wheelbarrows and shovels.
People on, on that dozer, a lot of the heavy equipment are saying you gotta buy something that's available right now, so we're looking to see where we can find something that's in a reasonable price.
So do we have a dozer we can use? So we won't have a dozer until two thousand twenty-three, can't get the parts till then?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, we can't even find a used one, used car.
So what do we do now for a dozer?
Buy a new one.
Skimming along.
Well, you probably can't get a new one till two thousand twenty-three either.
Available, um, we did find, they are some folks that's trading them in that had some ordered. Uh, we did find two that was available, they was in the, anywhere from two fifty to three hundred price range.
It's the one that's down, is it, was it used when we bought it?
Yes.
Well, I think we shouldn't buy another used one then.
So what we gonna do?
Two thousand four is what we bought for sixty...
Yeah, I don't think we should, if we have to get another one, I suggest we don't get used.
Well, we'll probably be waiting a couple of years, because we're getting away with it now.
So what are you gonna do?
Get a used one?
I don't know, uh, either we, if we find something, we purchase it, because we found two that was very good units, they still had warranty left on them, they sold within a day.
But I mean, it could be six months before you find one, so what do you do in the next six months if you come across a job where you need a dozer?
We're just gonna...
We, we got jobs sitting right waiting now.
Some of them, we're probably just gonna have to push back or, or not do them.
Can you lease one?
No new ones available.
There's no rental lease available, huh?
Can you borrow one?
We're checking now in the, in the rental fleet if there's even anyone available to rent, and they said, in the rental fleet, they might possibly part with one and sell it out of the rental fleet, so we're checking everything, just need to, you know...
I'm, I'm just thinking of emergency situations where you might need a dozer, so I just wonder, you know, what will we do? Uh, just emergencies alone.
We have them.
We got three projects.
Well, I know projects, but I'm talking about emergencies, like a, a roadside crumbles, or a hill crumbles on a roadside or something, and you gotta clear it off, and you need a dozer to do it with.
He'll do what every other person does, he'll get creative with what he's got.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's what...
Get those creative juices flowing, Steve.
We're just gonna have to, I don't know if we need to...
Take it as it comes.
What we need to do is, if one comes available, we can't wait. If we wait, it's probably gonna be gone, I might be able to put a, have them put a hold on one till you guys decide what you want.
So do we need to have a, um, emergency, um, meet, emergency, what is it?
Public Works.
Public Works meeting and approve the purchase of one if you find it?
That's up to you guys, whatever you guys want.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna have to get one.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't wanna set, we don't want you to find one, and then you have to wait until we, oops. We have to wait until you... You fi, get it approved.
I can use an emergency within a few hours of any meeting, so if we come across something, we can react back. And we can call it an emergency, put it on the agenda, and get it done.
Yeah, but that still is gonna take a day or two, he needs to be able to say, yes, we want it.
I could probably have one held, and, you know, and, pretty much, pretty much if they hold it, yes. I know they're looking at one coming in on a trade that's something what we want, and it's, uh, low hours, so.
If you wanna authorize the purchase of a bulldozer.
Yeah, not to exceed a certain amount of money.
We can get it on the agenda and get it done, and then if he finds something, we can authorize him up to a certain point.
Right.
And go ahead and buy it if he got it. Is if that's what you wanna do, uh, I suggest we do it, because you're right, we need the emergency equipment. So I would suggest either we, either we do it the next time, but you may wanna have an emergency meeting, do an ordinance that says we authorize a purchase where he tells us where his price range is.
Yeah.
Authorize it and go, and then let him go buy some whatever he wants, we all trust him to do that.
I would hate for him to miss out on one, because he had to wait twenty, uh, forty-eight hours to get approval.
We just missed out on it.
I think you, you're correct, I would authorize him in advance, just give him the authority to go find one, sign the contract, get it done.
This meeting, we know it's emergency.
What?
We know it's emergency, why can't we do it this?
Can we do it right here?
If it's an emergency.
Well, we can't do it, because even an emergency agenda, unless you wanna, I can't post an agenda for this meeting. I could've done it an hour before the meeting, but I can do, we can do it real quick, I'm available, or care, you know, we'll get it done.
I suggest we get that worked out.
I think you oughta authorize him to, actually, it's not a bad idea if you trust this kind of situation, and emerg- give him an emergency authority that exists, you know, agreeable, maybe he and the mayor are emergency authority to act if they need to do something in an emergency, and that, you clear it forever for them, and your people can act, I think that was the way I'd structure it.
That's it?
I got, I got one simple question for him. Steve, uh, they've been switching out electrical meters in Sawmill Ridge. The citizens were not notified.
That's not us.
Well, hold on. Uh, I'm recommending that La Cle needs to notify the city about switching stuff out like that, because it's inconveniencing all the residents down there.
They wouldn't do it.
I'm gonna call them, because it's wrong, it's wrong for them to do.
We don't have nothing to do with their power grid, and.
Yeah.
They won't notify us.
Well, he, well, I'm just saying, it should be a courtesy call, so the citizens will know that the power is being shut off, because they've been doing it all week long, they started last week and they've been doing it throughout the week.
If it's a change out, it's probably only taken like two minutes maybe, right?
Uh, in some instances, yeah. Uh, the power went out this past weekend, and it stayed off for several hours. I don't know if it impacted anybody else in St. Robert, but it impacted Sawmill Ridge, uh, big time. So that's all I had, Steve, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Don Cogman, did you have a report from him?
Pardon?
Do you have a, a report?
Don had a death in his family, so he's not here tonight.
Okay, Ricky, transfer station.
Busy man tonight, Ricky.
Big Rick.
It's short tonight. Uh, we got another load of cardboard, supposed to be going out this week, so that's another twenty tons of cardboard for recycling. And, uh, all I got's the tonnage report, uh, it's a little low because of, uh, the Cr- Christmas, everybody being gone on Fort Leonard Wood and everything, so um, right now, it was, uh, twelve hundred and sixty-five point five five tons, and the average is at one eight, one eighty.
Wow.
So.
Thank you, Ricky. Stephanie?
Okay, so for the parks and regs, um, we did start swim lessons this past Saturday, we have eighteen kids, uh, registered for swim lessons. February eighteenth, uh, Jean is going to do a, um, barbecue cook class at the community center that Friday and Saturday. Um, he's bringing his smoker and everything, and giving a class on how to use a smoker and the coals and the wood chips and all of that stuff.
Is there a charge for that, do you know?
Yes, there is a charge for it, it'll be coming out, and it'll be open for twenty people, the first twenty people to sign up.
First come, first served, right?
First come, first served, yes. And then, um, this Thursday also at the community center, um, there's like a job fair that they're holding from ten to two for manufacturing, um, um, positions, so.
Barbecue gift.
And then the barbecue cook-off, we are moving along very well. Um, I think me and Mark have, um, Anita, uh, slightly beat, I think, I think, I don't know, we're not keeping up with numbers. Um, but we do have, um, sponsors are rolling in, um, we do have twenty-seven teams signed up right now, we have a total of sixty-four judges, and they're still applying, um, more judges are coming in, um, throughout the week.
Are they gonna have another class for judges, any, before the barbecue cook-off, or we don't need it?
No, not this year.
We don't need it, okay. Thank you, Stephanie.
Hi.
Oh, I've got one short thing for close, and then there's one other thing. You all may be aware that Executive Order fourteen oh four two, the people work on post, basically said that, uh, DOD, uh, if you had employees, they had to be, uh, vaccinated, they weren't, then basically, they had to be vaccinated in a certain period of time, if, and, and then you had to do all kinds of things to comply. If you did not do it, then those employees probably would have to be discharged on a federal contract basis. Uh, but that has been modified, with, that affects us two places, CoUSA and the airport. We had significantly, uh, impactful, uh, employees that it might've been a problem for, however, uh, I have been in discussion with Ma- American Water, who is our general contractor for CoUSA, and, and Georgia federal judge issued a nationwide injunction against that executive order that applies to everything. The Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals has taken that on, and it has been set for, uh, disposition late January. But yesterday, the Missouri, United States Supreme Court argued two cases that will impact that one. Uh, so the idea now, and, and the advice, and my opinion to our people, has been for about a month that we don't do anything, because I don't think it'll be upheld. Uh, the Georgia court, or, uh, injunction said, went along with my opinion, and, uh, Eleventh Circuit probably will. So at this point, that is not gonna impact us on any of our employees. At the end of the day, it's gonna go to the US Supreme Court, and then we may have to make those hard decisions later on down the line, but right, right now, uh, we don't have to.
So you're referring to the, uh, having an over a hundred employees?
Well, the problem that we have with our contract is it, whether it's, there's two provisions, over, over a hun- uh, hundred employees or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? Problem is, we're a subcontractor, and we have what called flow-down clauses from the general contract, okay? So legally, all that gobbledygook means we could get sucked into that morass.
Okay.
And we also don't know whether these job orders are included in the contract, because they're all part of an addendum to the federal contract. So those are all significant legal issues that are put aside now, because it's declared unconstitutional, it doesn't matter. We don't have to comply, American Water's not gonna comply. Uh, we don't have to comply at, at the airport. They also have the significant suggestions in there that says, uh, voluntary compliance is, is, is maybe not voluntary at a hundred, those numbers may not work. To answer your question, we're not gonna do anything until the US Supreme Court tells us one way or the other.
Okay.
You got some stuff for close?
I, I just got one little quick thing I'll close.
Okay, Anita?
I just have a few things, one of our, uh, twelve holidays is Martin Luther King Day, so we'll be closed on Monday. The, uh, the city will be, our emergency services police, of course, will be working. Our OEA grant, uh, has been closed out, it was six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. That was a grant, uh, for, we got for base closures whenever they, uh, were, were doing those grants. It actually went to SOP for some studies, and they've gotta make their final presentation to the cities yet, they haven't done that, so. But it has closed. Mr. Holland, who worked for OEA that we all got to know really well, and, uh, really helped promote us and help us, he retired. And the mayor was hoping he was gonna move to Ralla, but his wife had other ideas, so, uh, he's staying where he was at. Uh, one of the first subdivisions I worked in whenever I started was Rockwood, and we did annexations there. Um, we've got a couple of more that we have, uh, received that I'm working on that we'll bring before the board, it has to go through, uh, the attorney.
Planning is done.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, that's on Lennel, and there were houses that sold, uh, that's a spot subdivision annexation. So we're very diligent in trying to pick up those homes that didn't, so we'll have that to come before you. Also, the Growth Alliance will meet next Wednesday, the eighteenth, here at nine o'clock, if anybody would like to come, we've had several industrial leads. Mayor actually sent me out, uh, email we had gotten from the state, where they had fourteen big state leads. Seven were still in play, and seven they had lost for various reasons, so, uh, we thought that was interesting and, uh, looked at that. CPR, the cell phone repair, uh, that was down in the lower mini mall, they have closed their St. Robert, uh, office due to not being able to get staff, uh, you can call the Ralla office, and they'll meet you up here and take care of your need.
Who's that?
CPR cell phone repair.
Oh, okay.
They do like, um, your covers, like, and if you break your stuff, so they've been very accommodating with that. At the last council meeting, you passed, uh, the TEAP, um, grant, and we got it uploaded in the portal, and we're working on it. The Chamber of Commerce on your table, I put the community leadership, for those of you that said you were gonna go, February the eleventh at six o'clock. I know, uh, a lot of you had trouble downloading that, so, uh, Reggie and his wife are gonna go, and Reggie's gonna read the mayor's letter, and uh, Walter and John and Dr. Slade and Linda, I know, are going. Let's see, um, Walter, you, or Charles, you talked about Mu- Martin Luther King. CoUSA has been, uh, busy, that real cold night we had with the ice storm, Trevor sent us pictures of them out there working. It was horrible. Uh, the chamber will be here on, uh, meeting is, uh, tomorrow at the Waynesville Methodist at eleven thirty. Leadership Pulaski County will be here Thursday at three thirty, they do an annual, um, little meeting here with the leadership class, mayor talks to them, and, uh, that's all I have right now, there.
Okay. The next regular Board of Alderman meeting will be January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, at five p.m., unless we do one emergency meeting for a hold record. Meeting being closed pursuant to Missouri law chapter six ten, page oh two one, including section one legal, section two real estate, so. A motion to go under the executive session.
Motion.
Next motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call.
Charles?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.